For meeting of the North Little Rock City Council to order, and I ask Ms. Whitby to please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Gibson.
President.
Bryant is absent. Robinson?
Present.
Thomas?
Present.
Berry?
Present.
Parker?
Here.
Height?
Here.
And Witcher?
Present.
McCormas present.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. Can I ask that we stand for the prayer to be led by Alderman Parker, followed by the pledge by Alderman Berry.
Heavenly Father, I'd like to personally thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening on behalf of the citizens of North Little Rock and myself. I appreciate the freedom of having that liberty to speak openly to you in a public forum. It may be limited in the future, certainly hope not in North Little Rock. I want you to please give us the wisdom to do what is in the best interest, not only of our citizens, but what you would find pleasing. Help us, Lord, in everything we do. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So move. Second. Motion made and seconded that the minutes of the previous meeting be approved or submitted. Any discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number four, you want it read?
Please.
This is a memorandum to members of the city council from Michael Drake, Director of Main Street, Argenta Incorporated. It's regarding Argenta Adventure Theme Signing Celebration at Stevens Dickey Park. Dear Mayor Hayes and members of the city council, it's my pleasure to announce and inform you of the launch of Argenta Adventures, a series of events that are scheduled to occur in downtown North Little Rock over the coming months, which will bring attention to and celebrate our emerging arts and entertainment district. This evening I will deliver a briefing on the first of these events, the public theme signing at Stevens Dickey Park, to occur Thursday, October 12, 2006. Thank you for the opportunity to share this exciting event with you, and please accept my thanks for your continued support of the development of the Argenta Arts and Entertainment District.
Move, accept, and file.
Second. Any discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number four, you want it read?
Please.
This is a memorandum to members of the city council from Michael Drake, Director of Main Street, Argenta Incorporated. It's regarding Argenta Adventure Theme Signing Celebration at Stevens Dickey Park. Dear Mayor Hayes and members of the city council, it's my pleasure to announce and inform you of the launch of Argenta Adventures, a series of events that are scheduled to occur in downtown North Little Rock over the coming months, which will bring attention to and celebrate our emerging arts and entertainment district. This evening I will deliver a briefing on the first of these events, the public theme signing at Stevens Dickey Park, to occur Thursday, October 12, 2006. Thank you for the opportunity to share this exciting event with you, and please accept my thanks for your continued support of the development of the Argenta Arts and Entertainment District.
Move, accept, and file.
Second. Any discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number four, you want it read?
Please.
This is a memorandum to members of the city council from Michael Drake, Director of Main Street, Argenta Incorporated. It's regarding Argenta Adventure Theme Signing Celebration at Stevens Dickey Park. Dear Mayor Hayes and members of the city council, it's my pleasure to announce and inform you of the launch of Argenta Adventures, a series of events that are scheduled to occur in downtown North Little Rock over the coming months, which will bring attention to and celebrate our emerging arts and entertainment district. This evening I will deliver a briefing on the first of these events, the public theme signing at Stevens Dickey Park, to occur Thursday, October 12, 2006. Thank you for the opportunity to share this exciting event with you, and please accept my thanks for your continued support of the development of the Argenta Arts and Entertainment District.
Move, accept, and file.
Second. Any discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Let me, I know that we've got listed a presentation with regard to the master plan of Burns Park. I think we're looking at trying to address some technical difficulties, and so what I'd like to do is go ahead and call the public hearing and suggest to the council that there are a few things that we might like to do. I know I've been working with the city attorney's office on a couple of amendments, and so what I'm thinking that might be the best way for the public hearing to be addressed, so that all those here will have a chance to comment on the final document, that we go ahead and deal with the special call and the resolution that is in, well, actually, you know, deal with the special call and then have the public hearing and then deal, you know, with, well, let me see, let me say this again, this way. We deal with a special call on the ordinance and, you know, basically consider the amendments. I won't call it for a vote until after the special, after the public hearing, and then people would have a chance to address any of those amendments that they might want in the public hearing. With that, let me go ahead and ask Ms. Whitby to read the special call.
Yes, sir. This is a letter dated September 22, 2006, Honorable Members of the City Council, Regarding Special Council Meeting. Dear Members of the City Council, this is to advise that we have called a special council meeting of the North Little Rock City Council for 7:05 PM on September 25, 2006, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. Item one, an ordinance to grant a franchise to all companies that currently conduct or may hereafter conduct the business of providing telephone services in the city of North Little Rock for the establishment and continued operation of their respective telephone systems and all business incidental to or connected with the conducting of telephone business and systems within the public property of the city, providing a franchise fee to be paid to the city, repealing all ordinances and agreements in conflict herewith and for other purposes sponsored by Mayor Patrick H. Hayes. For your information enclosed, please find an amendment for R-06116, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with AT&amp;T Arkansas to offer IP-enabled video services in the city of North Little Rock, and the amended agreement, which is attached as Exhibit A to the proposed resolution respectfully submitted, Mayor Patrick H. Hayes. This is signed by seven of the eight council members. Alderman Bryant's signature is not here.
Was Alderman Bryant notified?
I believe he's out of town.
He is out of town, but was he notified?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Is that a problem?
Well, if he's out of town, he couldn't be here anyway, so I don't think that it is a problem.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor, if it helps any, I had visited with Mr. Bryant early this morning, and he was aware of the special call.
Okay. I think the issue, if I remember, is that, you know, if they're notified less than 24 hours ahead of the meeting, that notification is mandatory. If they were notified before 24 hours, it was, it is not mandatory, but I think notification is, and so based on Alderman Witcher's, you know, unless the city attorney tells me something different, you know, then I'll declare the proper notification was had with regard to Alderman Bryant, and so that this motion, I mean, this resolution, or this ordinance is properly in front of the city council. Where we have our amendments, and now I'm going to go ahead and ask the resolution, R-06116, is a companion to this issue, and it goes to the, giving the mayor the authority to sign into, sign an agreement that, you know, essentially has been negotiated between the city attorney's office, myself, and AT&amp;T. So I'd like to go ahead and read that. I will not call it for a vote, but I would like to amend it. There are two provisions in there that we would like to amend, and then we'll be in a proper forum to have anybody comment on both the resolution and/or the ordinance. It's our intent to call the ordinance first when we get to actually voting on that. So, Ms. Whitby, unless there's an objection, would you read Resolution 06116?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with AT&amp;T Arkansas to offer IP-enabled services in the city of North Little Rock.
Mayor, if you'd like, I'll go ahead and distribute these amended agreements as negotiations are ongoing today, and I'll answer any questions regarding those.
There's just two areas that added, some additional clarification, and then there's one point, you know, I'm going to ask the AT&amp;T representatives for clarification that we weren't able to reflect in legislation, but I think everyone feels like it's fairly well-understood. After, you know, the city attorney distributes it, I'll let him explain the two amendments.
Got to watch out for that tag banister over there on the side. Mayor, I've left some copies on the presses table for anyone who'd like to have a copy of the amended agreement. I know they'll run out quickly, but I do have a few that can be passed around, and they can show two clauses that were added, one being on page three, about in the middle of the page. There's added language that provides that if either party would seek to improve our transmission method, that we'll work together to, in a cooperative fashion, determine who's going to be responsible for capital cost upgrades, and that's basically, in the unlikely event, that we would have to further upgrade our systems to be compatible, such that PEG programming is transmitted across the IP platform, we agree to work together to make sure that the capital costs will get paid for in that eventuality. But, like I said, it's unlikely that would occur.
Yeah, let's go ahead and take these separately, and let me explain that, and then I'll ask for a motion to, you know, to adopt that amendment. You know, one of the things that, you know, we felt that ought to happen is, obviously, our government access ought to be able to go out over the Internet protocol, and if you'll note, in a, one of the paragraphs following, I guess it's subparagraph D, it indicates that to cover the cost, any cost of, you know, any modifications that might be necessary for our signal to go out over IPTV, that that cost, in subparagraph D says that AT&amp;T will provide the city a one-time upfront capital grant to cover the initial setup cost incurred by the city to make this content available on the Internet. You know, first of all, we don't anticipate that cost will be great. Second of all, you know, in this paragraph, AT&amp;T has agreed to pay for that upfront cost. You know, the concern that we had that added this language is that, in the unlikely eventuality that there was some other modifications to the AT&amp;T system that required additional expense, then, you know, that the city might be in a position to have to bear that. You know, we recognize that the length of this contract will not exceed three years, which ends in, I guess, December 31, 2009, if I'm not mistaken, is what that indicates, so that, you know, that there's very likely that this service will not be provided until sometime next year, perhaps at the earliest, and then, you know, there would be a great deal of unlikelihood that anything other than the initial setup would accrue, so we wanted to add this language in case, you know, some, you know, significant technological advance occurred that would then give AT&amp;T the opportunity to come back and do that, and then would cost us some dollars with regard to that. So this language was added to try to cover that eventuality. Any questions? Any council member have any questions? Are you referring to questions just for the amendment? Just for the amendment at this point, yeah. What we want to do is get into the public hearing once this is amended, and then open it to public hearing, and conduct the public hearing, and then we'll come back to our business, and that'd be the time that the council would have an opportunity to get into the discussion. Any other questions?
It's a misunderstanding on my part, but in my, my discussion, I can't tell if it's on.
Well, I can't see, so I'm not colorblind, but I can't see.
It's off.
See, that's when you, when you can't, when you, when you're blue, green, or red, whatever color, I'm colorblind, I can't tell the difference between a red one and a green one. It was my understanding that if AT&amp;T made changes in their system during the period of this contract, that would cause us to have to make a upgrade to our system, that they would pay the cost of that. And while it's also unlikely that it's going to happen, but if it does happen, then we'd be able to continue our public service, public, what do you call it, PEG channels, I think it is, then the city would have to incur a cost to be able to meet that, and that's not what I understood in the, in the meeting I had today.
You know, I mean, I, I agree, and that's one of the reasons that this was raised, and in terms of negotiations today, this language was, you know, was added, or I say was added, you know, is intended to be added in the form of an amendment. You know, at this point, unless there is a change of position, that's, you know, the best that we could do. It's not perceived that this would be likely, but, you know, your observation was the same observation I had.
And it got stuck in there after, after what I thought was, continue on with the others.
Next amendment?
The next amendment is on the last page, under Section 21, Authority of City Council. In that section, a sentence is added whereby the city council is reserving its right to increase the fee imposed under Paragraph Three, which is the 4 percent fee. It means that you reserve the right to increase that fee to that which is imposed on other video service providers, and we cite the section, as an upper limit, we cite the section under the Federal Communications Act, which really applies to cable. It kind of underlies some of our intent in negotiations to hit a point of competitive neutrality to the point that we could. We sought to establish a competitively neutral position. It's not always possible, but it's something to be strived for, and that's the intent of that clause, that if we came back and revisited the cable franchise at some point at which we absolutely have the legislative authority to do, and raise them from 4 percent to 5 percent, we could likewise raise this one.
Let me just add a few postscripts to that. You know, right now, you know, as I understand it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, that we have the authority to raise up to 5 percent our cable franchise fee.
Yes, sir. That's under the Federal Communications Act.
And we have chosen not to do that, and in an effort to try to maintain as much of a competitive balance as we could, that fee, you know, at least initially is being, charged to AT&amp;T would be 4 percent, which is the same thing that we're charging cable. If this council subsequently decided to increase the cable cost to 5 percent, again, which we have the authority to do, then I wanted to also make sure that that was reflected in this agreement where we could also increase the telephone, or AT&amp;T, their fee to also 5 percent, and that's what the intent of this language is.
I guess this question is Mr. Carter. In the Comcast contract, isn't that gross revenues instead of subscription fees?
Yes, it is.
So why, obviously, this was a negotiated item, why would, as I've said earlier, I want us to do this, but I want everybody to be on the same playing field.
Right.
I mean, if, 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 if we're going to charge them for, if Comcast is for it, paying 4 percent, we want them to pay 4 percent. Comcast is paying on gross revenues, AT&amp;T needs to pay it on gross revenues. I, we, that's enough, Sam. That, that would require an amendment also.
Will you respond to that?
Sure. Under the, first approach that we'd taken of this was just to establish a franchise fee on telephone, the concept being that AT&amp;T runs telephone service and has other ancillary services that they run with their telephone. So they'd pay a franchise fee on their telephone service and run whatever ancillary services they needed to run with it. Cable likewise runs their cable service and runs ancillary services along with that, such as Internet access and voice-over-Internet Protocol telephones. When, when we compare the two side by side, because of the state restrictions on franchise fees on telephone, the fee on telephone was going to be much less, I say much less, that's an overstatement, would be less than the franchise, total franchise burden that was imposed on the cable industry. By imposing the 4 percent on the IPTV, that was an attempt to levelize that burden. Does that make sense? No?
No. I think the word...
I know one of the things, and this may or may not be, because what we, what we're working with is not quite apples and apples. We're working with, you know, apples and oranges, as I've, you know, kind of gotten into trying to understand this, and while the end user, you know, seems to see telephone and then, in one sense, and then see video, or we'll say TV on the other sense, you know, how they get to us is by different directions. You know, Congress has chosen to authorize us to be able to do certain things, you know, with, with one approach and not with another approach, and for example, you know, Comcast is now into the telephone business. If I'm not mistaken, there is, you know, we're not charging any, you know, there are not any franchise fee on Comcast's telephone.
That's true, because we're precluded...
Vonage, is that the Vonage language?
That would be the Vonage decision that was issued by the Federal Communications Commission, has been acknowledged in the Eighth Circuit as well, that voice-over-Internet Protocol telephones are exempt from local regulation to include franchise fees.
So, you know, so, you know, we can't exactly mirror one to the other, you know, in every respect, because the federal, you know, the federal government is in some respects, and I'm told that, that that Vonage language was affirmed by the Eighth Circuit, which governs this, this area. So, you know, the, the ability for us to mirror one to the other is somewhat limited because of the, you know, cubbyholes that Congress has, and/or the FCC, has chosen to address these various services. Now, help me out, Mr. Carter, if that's, you know, if that's off base.
That's right. I mean, to understand the way the Federal Communications Act works, is it, it tries to regulate similar communication forms and similar ways. The Federal Communications Act is very broad. It's over 320 pages on my word processor, and I've read way more of it than I've ever wanted to. It regulates TV, radio, we're familiar with the cellphone regulations that are out there, regular telephone communications, cable TV, it regulates everything, all forms of communication that are electronic, and the way that it regulates them is to categorize them. That's why I've used the language to stick it in a cubbyhole, and everyone who is put in that cubbyhole is regulated the same way. The problem that we run into is when one cubbyhole competes against someone in another cubbyhole, right? Such as when someone uses their telephone at home vice a cellphone. Cellular phone is beyond our franchise authority, but here we sit tonight about to impose a franchise fee on landline telephone service. Someone uses the landline, they're going to have to pay an additional fee to the city for using that versus using their cellular phone. To an extent, that does create an unfair competitive situation, but the two are just treated differently from a regulatory standpoint, and there's not really anything that you can do to fix that. We can try to the extent that we can to make the apple look like the orange, to force it to be the same size. When it comes down to it, one is an apple and one's an orange, and they're different. We can try to create competitive neutrality, but there are limits into what we can do.
Mayor? Okay, Alderman. Can we talk dollars and cents, then, instead of talking percentages on franchise fees? Well, we can, but let's, I want to give the public a chance to get up here, so, you know... Can we revisit this topic? Sure, absolutely. You know, right now, I'd like to address these amendments, if we can, and then move to the public hearing, and then move back to, you know, so, I mean, in, there's no way that I would consider that a vote for the amendments is a vote for the document at this point.
One quick question, Mayor. On the proposal under D, do we have any idea about the cost of the platform for the PEG setup?
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Drilling a little earlier, and I think we could save that question, because I know there's one other issue that, that, once we get these two, if we get them resolved, that I want to ask him, and, you know, I mean, I guess, Eddie, you want to come to the microphone right now? I think that probably is a proper question on this one amendment. Did you hear what Alderman Witcher had asked?
In order to upgrade the PEG, the channels that, that we're working on...
Let me just go ahead and quickly, excuse me, this is Eddie Drilling, you want to go ahead and...
Oh, yeah, I'm Eddie Drilling with AT&amp;T. But to make the upgrade, to put the PEG channel on an IP platform, it takes, I think of an investment of about 15, $18,000, that we're going to pay the fee for that upfront, so that's, that's, you know, it may vary a little bit. We're still kind of working on the details of that, but that's what we think it's going to be. The, the question, though, as to whether, what happens, I know Mr. Gibson asked this question, but what happens if there are further upgrades or something like that? We're trying, and I think, I haven't actually seen the final language, but we're trying to make, take that into account. That would be really unusual for us in a three-year period to have that, to have to do something to upgrade it again, but if that happens, we will. I mean, if that, if that's something, I mean, we're not going to, we want this to accommodate the city, and however you deliver your PEG channel, and so we'll make that investment to make that happen.
All right, let's deal with these, and then I've got one other issue that I wanted to get some clarification on, you know, I mean, you heard Mr. Drilling's comments on, on this, that, that seemed to address that issue. Alderman? Gibson, I don't know if you heard, did you hear Mr. Drilling's comments? All right, so those are the two issues right now, and then I've got one more, so let's just take these separately. The First Amendment, Ms. Whitby, you want to, do you have the language? You want Mr. Carter to repeat that?
I have what Mr. Carter passed around.
Okay, well, that's what, let's do that one at a time. I can read it. This is, this would be an amendment to subsection D of Paragraph Four that's found on page three, and this would be to add the following language at the end of subsection D. Should either party seek to improve its transmission method in a fashion that will substantially affect the integrity of the Internet-sourced PEG solution compatibility, the parties agree to negotiate in good faith regarding the responsibility for necessary costs of capital improvements for the other party.
All right, do I have a motion? I move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? I just note that, you know, in terms of the good-faith negotiation, Mr. Drilling just indicated that he would, any upgrades that might be necessary, that he, you know, that AT&amp;T would be responsible for those.
Okay, so then we can just put, can we just change this to that?
Yeah, let's just leave it where it is now. You know, I'm, you know, I'm taking, I'm taking that comment in, in terms of the good-faith negotiation, you know, with that, do I have, Ms. Whitby, would you call the roll?
Gibson?
I'm going to vote yes, because I'm going to bring in a change to that.
Yes. Robinson? Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, the second one, Ms., Mr. Carter, you want to point, or, Ms. Whitby, you've got that language, don't you?
Is it the, the one on the last page, on page eight?
Twenty-one.
Number twenty-one?
Yes.
The city council expressly reserves the right to increase the fee imposed in Paragraph Three of this agreement to that which is imposed on other video service providers in order to generally maintain competitive neutrality, neutrality, so long as such fee does not exceed the maximum rate authorized under Section 622 of the Federal Communications Act, 47 U.S.C. 542.
Do I have a motion?
Move to amend.
Is there a second?
I second that.
On the motion?
Quick, quick, quick question.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mayor, okay. All right, now, this doesn't fly in the face of our prohibition from state, does it?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware of.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, Eddie, would you come back up, please? Let me ask you this question, because I understand that there was consensus on this, and this was one issue that I raised. Currently, the citizens of this community are able to look at a county-wide channel, as I understand it, or at least something akin there, too, that we have visual ability to look at quorum court meetings, you know, the meeting of the city of Little Rock, you know, perhaps others, that, you know, and I don't know whether these, you know, may have any kind of proprietary availability or not, and that issue might remain, but, you know, that, that if, you know, as we go forward, that if that is available, then, you know, through the PEG channel that we're talking about with y'all, we would have the
Can I ask Mr. Drilling a question?
Okay, if it has to do with this amendment.
Well, it, well, it has to do with this, is this another topic we're going to come back and revisit?
Yeah, we're going to try to get to the public hearing real quick.
But it's about what you've just been talking about.
Okay, if it's about what I've been talking about, then fine.
Right, and on page three, under paragraph four, subsection C, it's, it reads, "As soon as practical, AT&amp;T shall provide written notice that it has the technical capability to provide IP-based access for the city peg channels in use on the execution date of this agreement." Would you define "as soon as practical"? How soon can we expect to have that available?
Well, we're, we're working right now to have this platform up and running. We're obviously going to have some cities across the country that are expecting it very quickly, so, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking that by the time we're ready to offer service here, it will be up and running.
From the get-go.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
All right, you know, those are the several issues that I want to deal with, we've amended. I know that, you know, that...
Two at some point.
Excuse me?
I have two, two, two at some point to discuss.
Okay, uh, well, you know, I guess since we want people to, to be able to comment on that, you know, I think that, you know, it would probably be appropriate that if we address those amendments, uh...
If, if, I'm, I'm only trying to get into agreement what I, what the, the comments that I believe Mr. Drilling made, and, and I can be corrected, but that the last sentence of four D would say, "Should either party seek to improve its transmission method in a fashion that will substantially affect the integrity of the Internet-sourced peg," and after the word "compatibility," put in, "AT&amp;T accepts the responsibility of necessary cost of capital improvements." Now, if I understand, that's what he said, is that if there were going to be any cost involved, that AT&amp;T would cover them. Because the way it is now is if we required AT&amp;T to do something to make our system, then we'd have to negotiate with them for their cost, because you got the word "for the other party" in there. And, and maybe I misunderstand Mr. Drilling, and I don't know if I did or not, but I was trying to scribble notes at the same time, but...
Uh, you know, we'll let Mr. Drilling comment on that.
Read those, if you, what you've got...
Basically, should, should either party seek to improve its system, then AT&amp;T accepts the responsibility for necessary cost of the capital improvements to do so.
Well, I mean, I think, to me, if, if either party agrees to upgrade your facility, I mean, the, the, the way this works is you, the city's is responsible for the content, and we're going to have it on an IP platform, or build it and pay for it to put it on an IP platform. So, to the extent that we would do anything that, that would make you have to upgrade something, or that you would be involved in having to pay for because of something we did, well, then we would be willing to assume the responsibility for that, you know, that upgrade.
Yeah, the thing I think where your language is, Alderman, that says, if we decided to do something, they would be responsible for paying for it, and I don't know that that quite would...
But, but in, in this case, the way it reads, it should either party decide to do it, then, then you'd negotiate, uh, who would pay the cost for the other party. And so if we made changes in ours, and we had been negotiating good faith with them for us to pay a part...
Well, I mean, if, if we're, maybe we can work on an amendment...
Let's work on that a little bit. Another thing, I want to go back, let's, we'll get back to that one. Let's go back on page two to three, item three, which would be this plain three. And I'm trying to put my, my financial hat on a minute. If I remember, because there's been several changes in state law, the most you can charge under existing state law on a telephone bill is four percent of the base. You can't charge anything on long distance or whatever. Basically, a base phone bill in Arkansas now is in the sixteen-dollar range.
I think it's four-two-five.
Yeah, four-two-five.
Four-point-two-five percent.
Yeah, four-point-two-five, but it brings in, the most you can get in is about seventy or seventy-five cents.
Well, it depends, because it's charged on business access lines as well.
Okay.
Which are higher than residential access lines, so we're spreading this over, you know, bigger base.
I understand, so, okay, so what happens is you still, that, that, that's the most you can get out of a telephone thing. On the cable, the way that this is written, you would only be paying on subscription fees.
Well, it says gross revenues.
From subscription fees.
Gross revenues from subscription fees, so that includes, you know, all the other gross revenues associated with pay-per-view, all those kind of things would be part of what's, what is charged, four percent.
The, on, I guess the question being, on the other side of the business, this is probably not a question for Mr. Drilling, on our current contract we have on, with, with Comcast, and I understand we've got a little bit of the city, maybe it's under charter, uh, what do we charge them, Mr. Carter? Is it the total bill with, if there's, if there's installation, if there's boxes or anything, do we charge them on that total bill?
I'd have to look at it to tell you exactly what it is, but it is fairly comprehensive. It covers almost all forms of revenue.
Hey, while, while we're sharing this wealth here, you know, Mr. Wilson, you want to come up and tell us the answer to that?
I'm getting complicated, but when you start amending things after the piece, my first piece of legislation got scribbled up.
Yes, sir, Mayor, we, um, the four percent that the, that North Little Rock has imposed on our subscribers, it's four percent on installation and boxes and anything else, it's gross, it's gross revenue.
Well, Mr. Wilson, I quite remember that you and I negotiated that franchise agreement, and so it was sort of mutual. We, 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 we didn't argue over that. In fact, I think I raised it one percent.
Yes, sir.
After I was here.
Mm-hmm.
But that was, that, that didn't come about without anybody's objection?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
No, that, I'm trying to, I'm trying to have a level playing field here, Mayor. That's all I'm trying to do, is that everybody, every, I'm doing my best to do that.
Yeah, and, and because these are, you know, and, and Mr. Carter can help us out, but because these are a bit different animals, there are some things that we can't do, can do to some, and some things we can't do to others. And, and, you know, the Vonage decision, is that a decision?
Yes, sir.
Uh, along with its adoption by, says we cannot, you know, charge Comcast, are you going to let us, maybe is there an agreement opportunity?
Uh, I don't think so.
No, sir. No more than, than AT&amp;T will allow you to charge them on their voice product.
But that's what I'm saying, we're working on trying to get as close as we can and what we think is fair, and so we can't charge y'all on voice.
That's correct.
Okay, so, I mean, you know, that, that is part of our challenge, Alderman, and I know y'all are going to have a chance to talk on the subject matter, so...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I personally think the word "from subscription fees" need to be taken out of section three on page two in compensation to the city, and just leave the word of gross revenues in there.
Okay, well...
And that is...
Let, let me do this, because you're right, it's, it's difficult to negotiate these things, you know, you know, as we stand here, now, we've got a choice, and maybe the easiest thing is, let's just let, let's just open this for public hearing, and...
We'll cover that subject in the meantime, okay?
And then we can cover that subject, maybe even at a recess, or, you know, we'll either thumbs up or thumbs down. Uh, you know, with that, although I hope this hadn't been confusing, I know it may be a little bit confusing, uh, you know, I'm going to go ahead and go back to Mr. Drilling and/or whoever you might want to do to introduce the public hearing, then I'm going to, you know, turn it over to Mr. Wilson, whoever he might want to do, and then I'm going to turn it over to everybody else. You know, whoever, whatever, however.
And we're only talking about this, the resolution part at this time?
Yeah, well, actually, public hearing goes on any of this, to be honest with you. We're just going to open it up and let anybody talk about anything they want that has to do with IPTV or cable or whatever else, and we just ask you to listen, all of you to listen, and if you agree, you know, feel free to say ditto, if you want to stand up and, you know, chime in, you know, by raising your hand. We're asking you to try to be as thorough but not repetitive as possible, and, you know, we're going to ask you to try to, you know, be as sensitive to that request as possible. With that, Mr. Drilling.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. City Council members, as I've said before, I'm Ed Drilling with, with AT&amp;T Arkansas, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be able to be here with you tonight and talk about what we think is some very exciting new technology and a proposal, or a couple of proposals actually, that you have before you, that we think will help us introduce this service to North Little Rock. I know you all have been hearing a lot about this over the last few months, some from your constituents as well about it. I think you're probably hearing from them that, you know, they want more choice and control over their entertainment services, and they want some competitive prices as well, and we think the services that we can bring the city will do just that. We've been serving North Little Rock now for over a hundred years, we continue to invest millions in our network and the community here every year, but I can tell you that our business has changed dramatically, and not anything like it has over the last ten years, which has just been really moving at light speed, so to speak. We, you know, we now have more cell phones in Arkansas than we do landlines, as you all have pointed out tonight, and the competitiveness of all this, most of the voice traffic now is carried over landline, over the cell phones instead of landlines. Long distance is sort of a thing in the past, I mean, everybody's got a package of some kind where they pay very little for long distance. Most of the traffic that we carry now on our, on our landline network is over, is a data or Internet-type service rather than voice. So we've had to change our network to meet those demands and give customers what they want, which is more high-speed Internet connectivity and pricing for bundles and services where we put these packages together for our customers. But it's not all about, about pricing bundles, because the technologies are converging, the voice and Internet and voice, video over the same network are all coming together, and they're going to be delivered over multiple devices to consumers. More and more people are downloading and viewing video content over the Internet, including live programming, they're watching over their computers or even over handheld devices. Earlier this summer, ABC reported that over eleven million shows were downloaded and viewed in the single month of May. People are demanding more control over when and what they want to view. Just a couple of weeks ago, the day, in fact, I was here before, amazon.com announced that a new video downloading service for movies and TV shows. Increasingly, people are going to get the content, entertainment that they want through the Internet. Microsoft and Apple just announced the other day, devices that will let people download content on their computer and will let them watch it on their television set. So all this is coming at us very, very fast, and it's sort of leapfrogging the kind of regulations and rules that we've had in place for so many years over how people get access to entertainment and content. So we're trying to prepare for this and, and take this technology to the next level by making our network even faster, we're building fiber further in neighborhoods that we serve, the download speeds and the interactive technology that we'll be able to provide are fast enough that consumers can get programming through a set-top box on their TVs about as fast as they can operate a remote control. This enhanced network will also carry our voice and Internet services as well. The last mile of it will still be carried over our copper network that's already in place. We call this service U-verse, and we're offering it in San Antonio as of last month to a launch of about five thousand customers. We're learning as we go, I won't make any bones about that, we've got a lot to learn, but it's going pretty well, and it's being well-received by the consumers there. It provides a hundred percent digital signal, we currently have over two hundred channels available with more to come, it has a digital, a digital video recorder or TiVo-like capabilities, search functions, picture within picture, viewing to make the search and interaction a lot easier, and because we don't send all the channels all the time to a set-top box, we have much more flexibility going forward to provide very diverse programming that otherwise might have a limited viewing audience, and this includes peg channels, which I'll talk about in just a minute. We're offering, as an example, much richer selection of Hispanic channels for those viewers who are interested in that programming, and we'll have very competitive pricing and bundles for this service, but it's not cable, which is defined as the one-way transmission to subscribers of video programming. U-verse is a two-way interactive technology for all the services that we provide. It's a packet-switched technology where information is delivered just like all of our other Internet traffic is delivered. On our IP network, you can't tell the difference between all the other Internet that we're delivering and how we're delivering this content, where cable transmits all their programming and channels to the customer's set-top box, and the set-top is, is the clearinghouse for all that. IPTV sends only the channel or channels the customer selects over the IP network at any given time. We're also going to be introducing a product very soon that we call Home Zone, which combines satellite video with data and voice service through a set-top box. So it doesn't, not only does the customer get content from the dish, but also can download content from the Internet, including movies, music, photos, there's thousands of movies in this file and shows that can be downloaded and viewed as well. Some of you, I think, have seen this product demonstrated, and it'll be also very competitively priced. So I want to take a few minutes just to outline what you have in these agreements before you, which has already been talked about quite a bit. The ordinance, we're agreeing to pay the city a fee of four-point-two-five percent on telephone revenues, something we've had in place with most cities around the state for a long time. It also incorporates traditional right-of-way and easement language, which we've obviously been living by in the City of North Little Rock, even though we haven't had an agreement. The IPTV agreement also calls for a four percent payment to the city based on gross revenues from subscription fees. We will provide the public educational governmental program or peg channel for the city. We'll also, as I've talked about, we're going to make an investment upfront to put the current peg channel and the programming on an IP platform so it can be viewed as part of our program, but it also can be viewed by anyone, anywhere that has an Internet connection. And it's important to see what putting this content on the Internet can do. It can be archived, where people can have easier access to it, they can see what they want on what subject, bring it up according to the date that the meeting may have taken place, if the city wants to set it up this way, because it'll be the city's responsibility for the, for the content, which you are already providing. It can eventually have greater content capacity, and it'll potentially enable user-generated content. We think it can really redefine the concept of public access and community information. Emergency messaging will be provided, when we first turn up our service, we'll be able to rebroadcast alerts, we're, we're working on the software and technology now where we'll be able to provide emergency alerts on all of our content in oh-seven. In addition to the quality of service standards already required by the state and federal law for our company, the agreement calls for the same service standards mandated by the FCC for all cable operators. We also state that we'll provide video through our service area with an IPTV or some other video technology, and right now, we're planning on that being the Home Zone product. We have plans to build this network in North Little Rock very aggressively, we've only been working on this for about six months, so we have a lot of work to do and places to build. We're building it much like we do any other network, where we start in the center and go by density and start building out from there. We're deploying it to all kinds of neighborhoods, contrary to some of the information that you may have been getting from, from our competitors, but we have aggressive plans over the next three years to deploy this. You know, I also want to point out that, you know, there's been a lot of talk about this level playing field that we're all searching for out there, and I've been talking about level playing fields, it seems like most of my adult life now. There are obviously issues that are being discussed here, they're being discussed in different states around the country, in Washington, DC, and we know a thing or two about level playing fields. I like to tell people, you know, let's look at the whole field, not just part of it. In the telephone world, by federal law, we have to open up our network, even for our competitors, to use any part of it they want to at wholesale rates. And I think, as Mr. Gibson pointed out a couple of weeks ago, there are forty-two companies in North Little Rock competing with us. Most of those companies are using parts of our network to compete with us, and we have to let them do that at wholesale rates. Not only do they not have to build out anything, they can use any part of our network they want to to compete with us. We serve not just within the city limits, but we serve more rural access lines than any company in Arkansas. So we build out and we serve a lot of rural areas that nobody else wants to go. We have a state law that applies to us that does not apply to the cable companies. There's a whole level of jurisdiction here that we have to contend with and abide by that do not, that does not apply to the cable companies. So this concept of, you know, level playing field, when these technologies start to emerge and the regulation has not kept up with the way the technologies are moving, puts us all in a bit of a playing field disadvantage at times. We provide lifeline service to low-income families, our competitors are not required to do that. We'll continue to, we pay into the Hearing Impaired Fund, which provides equipment for people that have hearing impaired and need some sort of special TTY equipment to, to accommodate their communications needs. Our competitors, at least on the cable side, are not going to pay into that. We also fund E-Rate funding, where we put money into, into schools, so do the other providers, some of them over here put money into E-Rate, which provides funding to schools to upgrade technology in the classroom. As a result of this funding, just in the last year, over five-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand North Little Rock School District to upgrade and keep technology current in the classrooms here in North Little Rock, provided by us and all telling some of the other providers. The VoIP providers are not going to be paying into that fund. So there's a lot of things that, that are just not going to be totally level. The fees, as you mentioned, on, on our voice product now, VoIP providers, including Comcast, are not going to pay for that. So, you know, what we've done, for the most part, although I get kind of worked up about it every now and then, we've tried to stop whining about all this a few years ago and have fought back to be as competitive as we can possibly be with our pricing and bundles of service. There are now, as I mentioned, over 60 providers in Arkansas offering all kinds of new services. This kind of competition coming from companies with few barriers to entry has made us a better company. I know our customers are getting better prices and services because of it. The cable franchise process, even though they say it's not exclusive, it has in fact created an exclusive monopoly for over 35 years. It basically assures that you'll have just one provider from a wireline standpoint. There are very few finished cities that have more than one cable provider, and requiring another total franchise agreement will just maintain that status quo. And our Comcast and our competitors on the cable side obviously know that. We think the evolution of the internet and the technology, along with our willingness to invest in this fiber in your community leapfrogs this issue, and obviously the law and regulation have not kept up with the technology. I very much appreciate your consideration of these agreements. They've been worked on for several months. Mr. Carter, Mr. Suesky have been working on these very hard. I'll end by saying, you know, independent polling of consumers in central Arkansas showed that over 90% agree and support that this technology be rolled out. It'll bring investment in fiber to the city, more consumer choice, control, and lower prices to North Little Rock. So we look forward to working with you very much and hope you'll approve these agreements.
Mr. Wilson, you or someone else, and then we're going to open it to everybody.
Thank you, Mayor Hayes. Mayor Hayes, members of the North Little Rock City Council, my name's Mike Wilson. I'm Vice President of Government Affairs for Comcast of Arkansas. As you've heard from me on numerous occasions, Comcast agrees that competition is good for central Arkansas. It's good for the city of North Little Rock, and we embrace fair competition to benefit all residents. We welcome the opportunity to further compete for video customers with AT&amp;T, along with the many satellite dish competitors we have in this marketplace. Our concern is the agreement being discussed here this evening does not promote fair competition for every citizen in North Little Rock. The agreement permits and encourages selective competition, and you have all heard our extensive arguments on this. It's very simple. AT&amp;T intends to only provide wireline or fiber optic light-speed competition to certain neighborhoods. And for the unserved areas, they plan to offer video service using a satellite dish and their low-speed DSL service, and they're calling this Home Zone. A question might be, why should it matter how they provide competition? Well, it matters because AT&amp;T will not be providing the same services to all residents. They'll be skipping some neighborhoods altogether with their light-speed product and only offering television service with a satellite dish in these neighborhoods, which duplicates a service which already exists. You'll have fiber optic or light-speed neighborhoods, and you'll have satellite dish neighborhoods. Less than two years ago, AT&amp;T, then Southwestern Bell, gave Wall Street analysts a presentation that stated, "AT&amp;T plans to offer their light-speed product to only 90% of the high-value customers, 70% of the medium-value customers, and only 5% of the low-value customers." And it'll be AT&amp;T that will make the decision where each neighborhood will be slotted. I have a packet that I'll leave with you, which that, which has some additional information. You may have heard from AT&amp;T that, well, you know, this really isn't the plan for North Little Rock. AT&amp;T may promise they'll provide light speed to all neighborhoods over a reasonable period of time, and if that's the case, they should put their commitment in writing. There's no reason, and there's really no question, that AT&amp;T can make this commitment. I, I know, because in order for us to provide the next generation of technology for our customers, Comcast upgraded every piece of equipment that we have in central Arkansas, from Jacksonville to Bryant, and we did it in less than two years. If AT&amp;T wants to do it, they can. AT&amp;T is a company with vast resources and shouldn't be entitled to special or favorable treatment. You should insist and AT&amp;T should agree in writing to the following at a minimum: a firm commitment to provide their light-speed video service to all neighborhoods; a firm commitment to provide emergency alert service to all neighborhoods. I, I heard that it was going to be provided, but again, the satellite Home Zone area will be serving a good portion of the community, and it won't have access to tornado and severe thunderstorm warnings if their customers are watching anything but a broadcast television channel. There are many cities across the nation asking a lot of questions and demanding that all of their residents are treated exactly the same. In fact, to date, despite all the cities that AT&amp;T has approached, it's our understanding that there are less than 10 communities that have signed agreements with them. Like the city of Naperville, Illinois, who stood up to AT&amp;T, North Little Rock should demand protection for all of its residents, not just for the high-end customers of AT&amp;T. We certainly hope you'll consider all of these facts as you decide the best route to follow to bring additional competition to the residents of North Little Rock. I'd be happy to answer any questions now or, or later.
We'll, we'll give you a chance later, but let's go ahead and let's see what this, we've had all interested parties up to this point, and let's see if there's any, you know, any citizens who want to claim to be a part of the public hearing. So, you know, now I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing and the microphones open. Identify yourself, you know, if you can, I'm sorry.
I think there's a representative here from Charter, a separate cable company in our community.
Yeah. All right, Charter. You know, we're going to assume you're going to say about the same thing that Mr. Wilson is, so if you've got anything different, then feel free, but please don't, you know, do any more duplication than necessary.
I'm making it quick. I don't, thank you, Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name's Eddie Trier. I'm with Charter Communications. I'm the Government Relations Manager with them. We just have a few brief points I want to make. Actually, today, we sent a letter to yourself and the council, and it clarifies, you know, our objections to each point with regards to the agreement.
For the record, that was distributed in public, in council correspondence.
Okay, thank you. And our biggest objective is video, video service, we feel, is the same as cable service. And I'm sure that's going to go through courts and everything else, you know, to provide that. Secondly, we feel there's no difference in providing video service to the customer. Basically, it's going over their platform, they have a converter. We utilize converters. We use different technologies, analog, digital as well. AT&amp;T has applied for statewide franchises in Indiana, so franchising is not objectional to them under the right terms and conditions. In our franchise agreement, we have equal protection wording in it, and that's something that we will look forward to working with the city after whatever is passed to make sure that our franchise agreement is on equal terms with the agreement for AT&amp;T.
We look forward to it, and we anticipate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, let me then open that microphone to the public. And anybody who wants to come under, up under that umbrella, you're welcome, and state your name and, you know, where you're employed, and that might be a good start. Yes, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Adrian Collins, and I am a citizen of North Little Rock. I'd just like to say that I concur with Mr. Wilson about the services that AT&amp;T is selecting to not provide to certain areas of North Little Rock. Earlier, the gentleman, excuse me, mentioned in his prayer, he said, "God help us to do what is best for the citizens." And I feel what is best for the citizens is that they have a choice. In this case, from what I'm hearing tonight, it doesn't seem like we have a choice. It seems that the, what they call high-value customers are going to get a better selection of opportunities than other customers, which would be the low-value customers. So I just thought that you should hear it from someone who lives in the community and who may be affected by this issue, that we all deserve a choice. Whether or not, if we could afford it or not, we still deserve the right and the choice to actually make that decision to have this opportunity. Thank you.
Yeah, if you could just give, you know, I know you said you live in North Little Rock, we'd sure like an address, too, if, if, you know, job, place of residence, you know, and, and address, if, if possible, we sure would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Name is Central.
Okay. Good evening, directors. My name is Sally Porter, and I, too, live in the city of North Little Rock. I live in the Stone Link subdivision, and I work for the Arkansas Supreme Court, so... You know, public opinion polls show that people in this area want competition for Comcast, and I happen to be one of those people that definitely want competition. I believe that the people of North Little Rock deserve the benefits that always come when there is competition. First of all, competition actually gives people choices. Today, we have no choice in my neighborhood. Actually, in my neighborhood, all I have is just Comcast. When companies know that you can choose them or someone else, they work harder to keep you as their customer. Competition always leads to better service, and usually, it leads to better prices, too. The people of North Little Rock deserve those benefits. So if you would, please vote yes for competition and actually give the people of North Little Rock the benefits that will come with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Joel Reynolds, and I am retired from AT&amp;T after 31 years, and I would support this. I've worked on every system that AT&amp;T has and uses, and I know they've invested a tremendous amount of money, not only in the state of Arkansas, but everywhere, they put in a $25 million switcher or whatever. And if Comcast offers telephone and DSL, eventually, they're going to be on AT&amp;T's system when they deliver that end-to-end sometime or other. And I'd venture to say, knowing AT&amp;T and the Bell Systems from divested their all the way through, they've been regulated and regulated and regulated and kicked around, and AT&amp;T will eventually provide anybody that has a telephone this service. It may not be this year, next year, but eventually, they will be able to get this service to anybody that has a telephone and a pair of wires running out to their house, whether it be copper or fiber optic. And I'm a resident of Meadow Lane Acres, the ex-mayor out there. Thank you.
Who, who replaced you? Yes, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Annalisa Trinidad. I am a proud citizen of North Little Rock. I feel that AT&amp;T should provide equal access to all areas of North Little Rock. The neighborhood that I live in will not be receiving, it's an urban area, so I will not be served, and that's not fair. What makes other neighborhoods better than mine, Mr. Mayor? I urge you to protect our choice as a citizen of North Little Rock. Thank you.
Microphones open.
Hello, my name is Destiny Webb, and I'm a citizen of North Little Rock. And I'm speaking on behalf of Protect Our Choice, and I don't believe that it's right that AT&amp;T is not offering their service to certain areas. If you ask me, I think that's discrimination. How can you say what they can afford and what we cannot afford? It should be up to us if we want the service or not. So please, protect our choice.
Mayor members of the council, my name is James Dietz. I'm self-employed real estate agent, and I live at 15 Creekwood Cove here in North Little Rock. I, too, feel that competition is good, not only from a price standpoint for, from the consumer, but also from a technological standpoint to the consumer. We all are besieged with these things now. I can remember when cell service first hit central Arkansas, it was a very expensive proposition. We only had at that point, I believe, one provider that I was aware of. Today, we have 15 or 20, maybe 30 different providers. The cost has come down and down and down to where everybody can afford to be bothered by cell phones. I think that AT&amp;T and Comcast are both fine citizens of this community. They have provided untold dollars to the community. They are good corporate citizens, and the only difference seems to be at this point that one has the ability to give us video transmission and the other one does not at this point. I think that if I can hitchhike on what Alderman Gibson said, trying to make the playing field as, as level as possible, that I think you ought to approve the ordinance along with the amendments that are before you tonight, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Microphone's still open. And we really would, we, we're pretty informal around here, but we'd like to at least get a little bit more formal where you tell us where you live and what that address is.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'm Dorman Larry. I live at 1006 East 11th Street in the Sherman Park area of North Little Rock. I'm here with the Protect Our Choice Coalition. I know it seems like we're outnumbered here today, but here in my hand, I'm holding 1,300 signatures from concerned citizens from this area, representing Sherman Park, Off Pike, Argenna area, Merrill Circle, who all feel as if, if you're going to provide a service for one part of the city, excuse me, if you're going to provide a service, everyone needs to have equal access to that service. The high-speed area, the high-speed internet age we're in today, we feel as if everyone deserves the right to, we just feel that everyone deserves the right to have access to that internet, high-speed. So we urge you, as the mayor and our councilmen, to vote no on this issue, or at least provide some provisions in, in the, in the bill that would allow AT&amp;T, give them, let us know when they're going to provide this service for us, so everyone can have equal access and a voice to be heard. Thank you.
One of the things I'd like to point out, just so everybody understands and emphasize this, you know, Mr. Wilson, how much longer is the franchise agreement that we have with you last before it's up for renewal?
2015.
2015. You know, so, and then I don't, there may be an automatic provision in there, or I'm not sure whether or not there is, but, you know, under the current agreement with, with Sal, with Comcast, that is up for review unless perhaps mutually agreed to by the parties and/or directed by court in 2015. There may be an automatic rollover, I don't know. But in any event, this agreement, and, and this is one of the safety vows that I think we ought to be certainly sensitive to, ends December 31st, 2009. So it's a relatively short time before this city, you know, has the opportunity, under whatever laws that then may be in existence, and there's federal legislation going on right now that may or may not alter that, but this city will have the opportunity in about two years to take a look at this agreement and, and to make any perhaps changes that they then may be legally permitted. Is that not correct, Mr. Carter?
I believe so. That was a very long question that you'd be posing to me, Mayor.
I just want to make sure I'm right and to make sure you don't, if you've got anything else to add, I was just kind of putting that postscript on those, those comments. All right?
With these 1,300, sorry. With these 1,300 signatures that you have here, they're saying, yes, I will support the coalition to protect our choice. So they're saying that they are for AT&amp;T, but they just want, they want the services to be equal?
I, I'm from a standpoint where competition is good. I believe that, as long as everyone has access.
Equal access.
Equal access to everything that's offered.
Okay.
AT&amp;T is the world's largest telecommunications company, and I don't think it would hurt their pockets if they were able to provide equal access to all citizens in North Little Rock, not just certain areas.
Yeah, let me point out this, and, and this may... Yeah, let me point out this, and, and this may, I'm sure, be open for debate, but there is a provision of the agreement that's being addressed by the resolution. It says, "AT&amp;T Arkansas shall not refuse to tender IP-enabled video services based solely upon income or minority status of any resident or group of residents." Were you aware that that was involved in this?
Yes, but they're not giving us a timeline and they're not saying when, if it, I mean, they're, they're not guaranteeing like...
I understand, but that, that goes in the direction of, of what you're talking about, I assume.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm James Art. I live off of Camp Robinson Road, past the fifty-second hundred block. I will be in support of this. If I understand the gentleman from AT&amp;T and they can all nod yes or no, they hadn't even drawn the maps of where they're gonna do what, when, or where. I don't feel they're gonna discriminate against anyone. AT&amp;T, when I do telephone work, which is what I do, computer cabling, if you're in an area where AT&amp;T provides the cable, I suggest to the customers that they use AT&amp;T because if you use another carrier, then you have to depend on AT&amp;T providing the cable and it's a lot easier to get it repaired. So, I am in support of this. I do not feel that AT&amp;T will undercut anyone or anything. I knew no Comcast rates are going up, up, up and, you know, they're a good company. I just know it took them five years to bury the cable in my backyard and I had to fall on the exhaust of my lawnmower before they finally buried it. They finally put it in a pipe and put it about twenty-four inches deep. Y'all have a good evening. Thank you very much.
Microphone, microphone's still open. Our agenda ventures is kinda blocking me from seeing anybody coming from that side, so I, I think we can take that down.
Mayor, I'm Scott Trotter and we know each other and I'm enjoying meeting, meeting with you on this subject on behalf of Comcast and I know other members of the city council and I really appreciate your deliberations. I know it's not an easy thing. And I don't wanna in any way criticize the effort that the city officials have made. I think that, that you've tried to bargain hard, I know you have, but to some extent, as Alderman Gibson has pointed out, AT&amp;T has been unwilling to give on certain points. And I would just like to compliment Alderman Gibson on the points that he brought up tonight. I think that he is absolutely on the mark with regard to his points. If you look at that paragraph four D that he brought up, it is not written in a way that expresses what he wanted to have achieved. And that's very clear to me, based on what he said he wanted to have achieved. He wants it to read so that if there is a change in transmission capability to facilitate the PEG, then he wants AT&amp;T to commit, to pay for the upgrade, whether it's something that was required by the city or by AT&amp;T. And that's not the way it reads and he's correct in pointing that out. And I know, Mayor, you said that's the best you could do, but...
No, I didn't.
It's not a criticism of you, it's a criticism of AT&amp;T for not being willing to put in writing what Mr. Drilling said he was willing to do.
Mr. Trotter, I'll let you say anything anytime you want to, but you don't need to say what I said because I know what I said and that's not correct.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry about that. I thought that's what you said, but, but in any event, I think that, that Alderman Gibson made a very good point. The other very excellent point that he made has to do with section three on page two, which is compensation to the city, where he pointed out the difference between saying gross revenues or saying gross revenues from subscription fees. And it's clear right now, I know as you all have heard the comments, that, that Comcast is paying the fee for gross revenues and it's not limited just to subscription fees. And why, why is that important? I know that the city's stated position is that it wants to try to raise as much money as it can through these fees and so I'm just gonna be very candid about it. You're leaving money on the table and once again, AT&amp;T will not come as far as you'd like them to. You're leaving money on the table because you're limiting it to subscription fees rather than gross revenues on everything related to the video services. And so, once again, I think Alderman Gibson makes a good point. And I know that, that's, I won't mention the mayor because he may think I'm misquoting him, but I'll just say, some today have suggested that one reason that might be fair is because under federal law, you can't apply the telephone fee to the Comcast type of phone service, okay? I think that's, that's been mentioned tonight. But let me say this to you. There's nothing to prevent AT&amp;T from moving to, into offering the very same type of IP-enabled phone service that Comcast offer, okay? And so, if AT&amp;T changes the type of phone service to IP-enabled phone service, then they too will be able to escape the phone franchise fee, all right? That's all they have to do is change the type of phone service that they're offering. So, then they would escape the phone franchise fee and the fee that they pay on video services would be only on the subscription services and not on all revenues. So, to the extent that you've thought that you were trying to be fair, you're not necessarily being fair. And I think the best way to be fair is to look at video and try to apply the fee in the same way that you do for Comcast and any other, any other video provider, whether it's Comcast Charter or anyone else. And it's a very excellent point that has been raised tonight. There's one final point I'd like to make and I'm not sure if it's something that you all are aware of or not, but if you could look on page three, paragraph four E, paragraph four E, and if you look at the very last sentence, it says, "AT&amp;T Arkansas will meet with the city to discuss the possible development of an economically and technically feasible process for providing PEG content to AT&amp;T Homezone subscribers TV." And I just wanna emphasize that to the extent that a member of the public is using the AT&amp;T satellite TV system, which they call Homezone, then there is absolutely no guarantee in this agreement that they would have the PEG content provided to them. I want you all to focus on that. The only way they're gonna possibly get the PEG content is if they are able, if the citizen is able to afford and is being offered the more deluxe type of digital service, which is called the IP-enabled video, okay? That's the only possible way under this agreement that they may be able to get the PEG content, but not under this sentence if they have to go with the lesser product, either for economic reasons or maybe that's all that's being offered. I mean, if they go with the lesser product for the satellite Homezone, then there's nothing in this agreement that ensures that there's any PEG content for those people. And I, I just want, I mean, that's very clear and I, I think that AT&amp;T is not in a position now to offer the PEG content to the TV subscribers of Homezone, the TV subscribers. Now, if they've got a high-speed internet connection too and they've got a computer screen, then they might be able to see the PEG content over their computer via Homezone, but not through the TV. And that's why that sentence is in there because AT&amp;T, as I understand it, doesn't have a way to provide the PEG content via the satellite TV Homezone product through the TV. Well, anyway, we really appreciate your very strong consideration of all these proposals and I, in representing Comcast, they really have convinced me that, that what they're after is just trying to help the city find the most even playing field that they can. And I wanna compliment Mayor Hayes and the others because they did sit down with us and, and they did make changes compared to the very first proposal. And they listened to some of what we had to say and we appreciate that and we think that as a result, there is a better proposal before you. We just think there's some other things, if you hold the line, you could get a little bit better, a little more fair, a little more money from AT&amp;T and for the citizens. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I'd like to interject that I've probably known Mr. Scott or twenty-five, Mr. Trotter twenty-five years. This is the first time we've ever agreed on anything and I'm really concerned about my position now.
We, when, when Mr. Trotter came over, I told Mike Wilson he had an hour, but if Scott came with him, he had five minutes, so.
But...
But we, we appreciate it in all seriousness.
It has been very friendly, it's been very friendly over the years, but you and I agree on a couple of things and I'm gonna try to work on those. The third one you brought up that really is a concern for me because after reading four C or four D, I thought that the, the PEG situation was solved. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Drilling to come back in a minute, explain that section because I did not read that clear enough.
Right. Well, and just to respond...
I didn't mean to bring you back up.
Well, that's okay. I just wanted to respond very briefly, which is that I've always appreciated Alderman Gibson and I guess based on his comments, you can certainly conclude that he and I did not get together on this before the hearing. That was his own idea that I'm reacting to. And I wanna mention Alderman Thomas too. He and I have been friends for many years and I respect your judgment, Alderman Thomas and all of you all, I appreciate your consideration.
Could we ask Mr. Drilling because that's the one, I think we're gonna talk about...
Well, let me, let me just mention, I, I, there's never been a representation to us that the, the Homezone was gonna be able to communicate the, the PEG channel. Is that what your question was?
I think, I, I guess in my meeting today, I, I failed to ask the question because I was more concerned that what we do here and what else is done in public service units will be seen, to be able to be seen on home TVs. And, and, and so, but I also brought up very much my concern, and I know that, and I will say this, Mr. Wilson, a tone to this, that I bought Comcast kicking, kicking and screaming before they ever would put the, the trailers on TV on all of their channels because of the emergency, because most of us grew up with three channels of TV and my goodness, how many hundreds are there now? But I think a person who, whether they're watching the Razorback game on Saturday when all of the stuff was flying through, or if they were watching cartoons, I think they should have the right same ability to get those public service announcements that...
One of the things that, and, and of course, Mr. Drilling come up and add anything to it, want to, the technology is not now available for satellite.
Okay.
Whether it be, you know, satellite dish that you go to Sears and buy or, you know, whether this product, you know, is, is a part of the solution. That technology's just not there. So, it's never been felt by us that that was a capability.
Mayor, I mainly said it was. I, I didn't ask the right question.
Is that...
That's sufficient.
Well, I mean, the, the dish company, Echo Star, controls the content that comes in over the dish network and, you know, that's transmitted by satellite from one location in the country. So, to, to transmit an emergency alert type system over a dish network right now is not, is not feasible for them to do it. What we're hoping to be able to do is work on technology that through the Homezone product that we'll be able to be able, you know, to transmit some emergency alert over that product, but we're not there yet. I mean, I'll be honest with you. I mean, there's been a lot of requests about it, but we're not at that point where we, where we're there yet, but we're in the agreement, obviously stating that we're gonna try to work on that technical solution.
Yeah, I've, I've got a few comments at, at appropriate time. I know that, you know, we've been going on this. Let's go, go ahead and see if we got any more on the public hearing and please be a part of the public if you wanna comment, because, you know, we may get into a little bit more, you know, other comments later, but if you're a member of the public, then we wanna give you a final chance now to come, comment, because there may be other opportunities for others that just a little bit later, but those are folks that are, you know, Comcast or AT&amp;T or going once, going twice, all right? The public hearing, you know, I'll go ahead and adjourn and then let me take a three-minute or fi- I'll take a five-minute recess. I know one council member needs to, you know, go say hello to an extenuating opportunity. Thank you. We're in recess. I won't name who.
In reading it, you know, it says that it'll be paid before the last day of March. So if it's on a quarterly basis, January, February, and March, unless I add it up, you know, that's one quarter. So how could they pay before the quarter's over with unless they based it on some, you know, some prior formula? And I guess I understand that's, I don't know that that's the way we, Mr. Sisson, is that the way we've done any of our other franchise?
We don't have any, Mr. Carter.
The Comcast has done once a year. I think a long time ago, when we did have a franchise fee, I thought we collected every quarter based on, and I thought it was just the preceding quarter, but...
So we collect from Comcast once a year?
Yes, sir.
If I remember correctly, you know, Mike Wilson has a tendency to be kind and deliver the check.
That's correct.
Okay, so we would be receiving a check in March of this, of '07, and it would be based on the customers that we had in '06. And so you would really be paying us before any revenue was received, in essence. Okay, I just want to make sure we all understood that, and Mr. Sisson understood it, that's the way it reads. Mr. Carter, you got any?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just, I hate to be, I'm just like the general public here, I'm still questioning what's going on. The discussion, though, is when the fee's gonna be paid and based on what, on what premise. It seems like that the telephone company's gonna be charging this franchise fees beginning January 1st of '07. So they have revenue coming in from the customers. Franchise fees will be charged to the customers beginning January 1st. But we're gonna be paid as a city franchise fee on what the perceived traffic would have been in '06. So it's not like they're paying on something they're not receiving.
Well, no doubt they'll be receiving some, uh, you know...
It may not be equal, but it's, there's still a revenue source coming into the phone company. It's not like they're paying out of their pocket for something they're not receiving.
We agree on that. Very soon, we're gonna start on a 2007 budget. I wanna know where to stick money in the 2007 for this telephone franchise fee or not to stick one in there. And the answer is, we're gonna stick it in there, and we'll have revenue.
Right.
And so if everybody's comfortable with it, and this is something that, at least if there's a problem with it, we do have some time to take care of it, so I'm ready to vote.
All right, on the, I'll just go ahead and take a motion to adopt on third and final again. Anyone, is there a second on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
There is no emergency clause?
Goes into effect, does it, goes into effect January 1st, doesn't it?
Yeah, I think it specifies, I don't know if it's, I think it specifies number of days, sixty days.
Sixty days after passage, Mayor.
No, oh, you can't put, but can you put an effective date on it instead?
We just said that it was effective sixty days.
So if it's gonna be effective?
The document says that this, that this ordinance is effective sixty days, really that's for informational purposes.
I understand. It's really, we don't, it's effective sixty days from now, but it really goes into effect January 1st.
January 1st.
I understand.
All right, uh, and, all right, we're finished with the special call, unless there's, well, in fact, this is the first item on the unfinished business. We'll go ahead and do this, and then we're gonna go back to our Parks report. So unless there's objection, Ms. Whitby, would you please read R. 06116?
Yes, sir, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with AT&amp;T Arkansas to offer IP-enabled services in the city of North Little Rock.
All right.
Move for adoption.
Well, I think what we need to do, Mr. Carter?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Don't we need to amend this in?
You've amended both sections that you wanted amended.
All right, we've already discussed the amendments.
But we hadn't amended it in, so you need to recognize Mr. Witcher's motion.
All right, Mr. Witcher.
And I second that. Now we need to amend in, hate to be, see my book.
What was your motion, Mr. Witcher?
For adoption.
Adopt as amended.
Adopt as amended.
Okay.
And now we gotta amend it.
Now we gotta amend it. Now we gotta amend it, amended, that's correct.
And so the First Amendment is to include this, is that's correct?
That is correct, right. What do we include?
Well...
There's a motion been seconded to amend the unfinished business resolution that was on the calendar. And now we've had, we have amended that, and now we, we've discussed that, now we need to amend in, you know, what we have discussed with those amendments. Is that not correct?
I don't know, I'm getting confused now.
You amended two parts. Your First Amendment was to amend in 4D, and your Second Amendment was the changes in number 21.
Have two more amendments you'd like to...
Two more amendments we need to work on.
And, and Mayor, if you, okay, that was the agreement. It was not actually amending the resolution, but it was...
That's correct. It was the, we dealt with the agreement so that we could have it in a position for the public to comment on.
Mm-hmm.
So essentially, what we, we did was preview two amendments. Now we need to amend that document in to substitute for the document that's currently behind 06116.
That was the one that put in the underlying stuff.
Move to...
Yes. You see what I'm doing?
Yes, I agree with you.
Okay.
To amend that by striking that, the agreement?
No, no, we're gonna get back to, we gotta amend in this agreement, which had the amendments in it.
Had the amendments in it.
Okay.
Sounds a little confusing, but, you know, remember what we did, so make sure everybody's clear. In order to put this in front of the public, we went ahead and amended the agreement that was before us, that was sent for informational purposes, you know, or that was distributed for informational purposes here tonight. And we changed that document twice. That document that has been changed twice, now, for purposes of any other amendments, we need to substitute in for what we had on file for the previous council meeting. Now, so I'll listen to a motion.
Move to insert the amended agreement.
The amended agreement that was discussed prior to the public comment section. Right. All right, everybody clear on that?
Yep.
It's this piece of paper.
All right, and that's, that's a motion by Alderman Berry. Is there a second to that?
Mayor, there was already a motion on the floor, so either I've gotta withdraw it or Berry needs to...
Which one's that?
Withdraw his. Okay, I moved to pass resolution 06116 with the amended Exhibit A.
Okay, we need to amend in the Exhibit A.
We need to amend it in first.
We, we, that wasn't on, that was a discussion, but that was not the, so we need to amend in.
All right, Alderman, Witcher withdraws his, and I assume whoever, who seconded that?
Okay.
Alderman Gibson. That's been withdrawn.
Okay.
Alderman Witcher had a motion to adopt as amended, which Alderman Gibson seconded, so they've withdrawn it, so we're back to where you said you were.
Yeah, I recognize this, no doubt this is a tad bit confusing because of the way we did this. We did this, we wanted to clarify for discussion purposes what was before the council for public comment, so we discussed a circulated version of the agreement, and that circulated version was agreed, was amended twice. And so what we need to do now is substitute that in, which is the motion made by Alderman Berry and seconded by Alderman Gibson. Any further discussion on that? Any confusion on that, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, now we have before us...
Two a moment, we have two amendments to the amended version amendment.
Right. Offer one, can I offer one?
You can do wherever you want to.
All right, my First Amendment, or our First Amendment would be, has to do with paragraph three on page two, compensation to the city. Uh, amend, the amendment, my amendment would read this way, that we would strike the words "from subscription fees," that we delete "from subscription fees" collected. The words "from subscription fees" is my amendment that we delete.
And I'll second that.
All right, any discussion?
I haven't even found it yet.
All right, on paragraph three, "from subscription fees," which means it would read gross revenues from fees collect, or from...
Take it.
You won't wanna do fees, you wanna say gross revenues. Gross revenues collected.
Collected from, so you take out all three words.
Okay, collected from each subscriber, okay.
Take out all three words.
All right, "from subscription fees," strike that, and therefore leaving gross revenues from each subscriber, collected from each subscriber.
Gross revenues collected from each subscriber.
Strike "from subscription fees."
Yes.
All right, now that's Alderman Height's motion, and I think Alderman Gibson seconded it?
Yes.
I'm about to do it.
Who did?
I did.
All right, Alderman Berry did. Any discussion on that, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Carter, would you clean up 4D for me?
I'd be happy to.
It's gonna be cleaning up the portion that we amended in.
I'm on page three, section 4D for Alderman Gibson's amendment, starting with the underlined section, to strike the words "either party" and insert "AT&amp;T." Skip one line and go down to the next, and starting with "the parties agree," we will delete "the parties agree to negotiate in good faith regarding," and insert the words And then at the end of the sentence, strike "for the other party." So the sentence will read as follows. Should AT&amp;T seek to improve its transmission method in a fashion that will substantially affect the integrity of the Internet-sourced PEG solution compatibility, AT&amp;T accepts the responsibility for necessary cost of capital improvements.
I'll second that. Motion made by Alderman Gibson, seconded by Alderman Height. Any discussion on the motion?
Mayor?
Yes?
What if we decide to change the transmission?
I mean, under the language, Alderman, if we decide to change the transmission, then that would be our nickel. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Move for adoption, as amended, I think is Mr. Witcher's motion, and I'll second that.
All right, any discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Vote yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Stop it. We'll give, I know there's a lot of folks in the room that might wanna leave.
About a three-minute recess.
Let me have a three-minute recess this time. We're in recess for three minutes.
Someone stole my water. He trusted your attorney with your water.
successful at that so far, so let's go back, and if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Whitby, and that means Mr. Rhodes, you know, try to, we're sorry to keep you waiting, but the technology wasn't working right, so you got bumped, and that was two hours...
That's all right. We're still excited about this project, that, we're gonna talk a little bit about a master plan for Burns Park. This process started about a year ago when we were selecting Carter and Burgess, who was the company that we selected to, the consultants, to do this study. At the time, we just thought it was appropriate. We, we had technical difficulties at that meeting, and they still were able to provide chill bumps for the commission, and the commission still selected Carter and Burgess, so hopefully at this late hour, they'll provide chill bumps for y'all tonight, and really have an opportunity to do something with a great resource we have as a community. Wanted to thank the commission, Mr. Davis, Tom Davis was here, he left due to the hour. Vicky Stevens, our chairperson, was supposed to be here, she is ill and could not make it, and then Mr. Bryant is out of town also. But we're really fortunate to have with us Sally Horsey, who will, since we had the technical difficulties, she'll be in the TV room operating the computer, and then with us, Sally is from Little Rock and the Carter and Burgess office here, and we have with us Philip Neely from the Dallas area with Carter and Burgess that will do the presentation.
And so Mr. Waller's at home watching this, is that right, Mr. Rhodes?
Out of town.
Oh, is he?
Out of town. Mayor and council, good evening. I'm Philip Neely with Carter Burgess. Really privileged to be here. I wanna give a tribute to a few key people who've helped us this last year. Bob mentioned Sally Horsey, she's our team leader, she's our project manager. Right now, she's running the keyboard in the back room, so I wanted to recognize Sally. And I also wanna just say thanks to Bob and his staff, Willie and Tina and John and others. They were a lot of fun to work with and were very enthusiastic. Parks Commission has been very excited the last several months as we've continued to develop ideas for Burns Park. So it is a, it's been a great process for us. I think you know this, but you have one of the great regional parks in the United States. But sometimes, when you come in and put a fresh vision to something, you're twice the size of Central Park in New York, you're bigger than Golden Gate Park, you're bigger than Grant Park in Chicago, you're bigger than some of those combined. You have more diversity already in the park, probably than any park in a multi-state region, so you have a phenomenal asset. The interesting thing is, it's been many years since you've set a master plan. And a master plan should really establish a vision of where you're going. So what I'd like to do is hit some high spots of our process.
Can I just interrupt you a second real quick? We've had a master plan, but it's just been in the heads of this council and, in collaboration with the Parks and Recreation Department, so, you know, rest assured, our, our master plan, you know, we're glad to put on paper now.
Right. Well, our process, I'm just gonna try to hit this quickly. Sally, let's go ahead and go into the next slide. When we started our early phase of work, we essentially just did analysis of what's there. 1,600 acres, you have multiple sports venues, you've got the golf course, tennis, trails, hospitality house, just incredible what you already have there today. And so we tried to just get a good feel for documenting the activity and the mix of what's going on today at Burns Park. Next slide. These are some of the key destination zones at the park that your people in your community know of, and people that come in from out of state, and you'll see those delineated in the different colored areas. Next slide. These are just, again, photo documentation of what's there. All of this should be included in your booklet, that's a summary of our overall process. Next slide. We summarized the areas of potential by these colored zones. You can see the golf course to the bottom right is in yellow, the soccer complex is in the purple, the big green area is what we're calling the nature, the major nature area, sports is in the blue. So we just begin to try to summarize those zones and what potential activities could be expanded on or added to those areas. Next slide. We also had a good series of stakeholder meetings. We had public input at large, as well as, we had seven different groups that were combined. These different groups would come in and visit with us. Sometimes those groups were comprised of three or four different organizations. We've just tried to summarize for you here the types of input. There's just no way you can develop a new vision for a park like this without talking to the people who have the enthusiasm and the commitment to, to program and use the park, and so that's what we did. We literally sat down at a table and worked with those groups one-on-one. In the end, we tried to summarize the input into a program. A program is what are the types of elements you want to provide in the park? These are the site program areas. Next slide. Trails is a major category, buildings, major building components within the park. And then we summarized the activity program, which means what are the types of experiences people wanna have? And these are, of course, many of these are already there. Most of them are there today, some of them would be new. Next slide. Educational is a, is a significant area that Burns Park could move into, being an educational park experience for the Arkansas natural environment and for ecotourism. I have said for the last few months, I think the most significant thing that's the outcome of the plan is the vision statement. The vision statement says Burns Park will be known as one of the great regional parks in the southern United States. That's fundamentally, that's what it should be. That should be the ethic of the park. Everything should come, come under that prevailing vision. These are five important goals to fulfill that, about preservation, diversity of activities, nature-based education, sports venues, and seasonal events. So as we move into the master plan, what I'd like to do is cover the different zones of the park. It's very difficult at this scale to cover everything, but there are 11, kinda, if you wanna call it recreational rooms inside the park that I'd like to touch on. And so what we'll do is we'll zoom in on certain areas, and I'll just quickly talk about these. The first area is what we're calling guest services. It will be significant to improve the arrival experience when you come to the park, that being that there's a sense of, of a gateway as you come in, there's a guest services visitor type check-in point, the potential of a new lodge for overnight stay, just really strengthening the whole identity and entry to the park, like when you go to a great national park or state park. It's got that same scale and the potential to it. And these are just, what you're gonna see on the slides are different types of places that exemplify the things we're talking about, guest services. Second major area, destination facilities. Again, these would be signature buildings, signature activities that would occur at Burns Park, major new facilities such as a multi-use aquatic center, essentially that's a large recreation center, and aquatics, a youth center, a new hospitality house up on the lookout point. Those are all major new facilities that could be standalone activities that people come to use, or they come to use that as a part of the overall experience of Burns Park. Group gatherings, this is, this would be primarily the gatherings of families and groups and organizations that would come for picnicking. There should be a grand pavilion, more picnicking capability, centralizing the play space, you know, expanding and upgrading Funland, which is a great nostalgic piece of the park, and just adding to that whole mix of picnicking activities. Baseball. Sports tourism is a big market, and certainly your baseball groups and softball are eager to expand on that, and so this would be a new eight-plex complex up to the northwest corner of the master plan, right off of I-40, and of course, could bring in great tournaments, great events to the city. On the south side of the freeway...
Can you go back to that previous slide?
Sorry?
The previous slide. Yeah, where is that?
Right up here, top corner. I said northwest corner, it's really the northwest corner of this, this half of the park on the north side of the freeway.
Sort of northeast corner.
North central, really, it's the north central part of the park, yes.
Down the street from my house.
On the south side of the freeway...
Let me, let me once again go back to that slide, though, 'cause that's the, that one, that one representation is the only representation that includes some property that is not currently in the park, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct. It would require some acquisition of land, that's correct.
Okay.
To the north there. The visitors, a true visitor center, environmental center would actually be housed in one major facility, be here on the south side of the freeway. And the visitor center should be a place that somebody could come and stay an hour, and then it could be combined with a whole environmental learning center, which is geared towards families, youth, field trips, seasonal travel by people. I think it's probably the most untapped part of what Burns Park could be about. And I just, I think really creating a image or a piece of Burns Park that's environmental-based and that could be used by multiple types of user groups will be very successful. Nature recreation is really that whole area inside the woods, the big green area. And it should be...